Jefferson Street parking had been tabled. We introduced renovations at City Hall. I talked to you guys about a bond issue and the sewer storm water plan. Dick brought everybody's attention and we've seen it. We've seen, we have information on it. We will not vote on anything tonight. We're going to discuss it, but in two weeks, in two weeks, we're going to make some decisions on these four. We're not going to, we're not going to carry them on unless we, we're going to try to get, we've got two weeks to talk to people. But I want to make a decision. Whatever the decision the board sides, we're going to go with and it's going to be a done deal and we're going to go forward. Because there's other, there's a few other things too that we need to get dealt with as we go forward. So the first bit of business is the road bond issue. I talked to you all about a bond issue to fix, to add to our, the money we get every year, do every year to fix some streets, which we figure this year we're going to have maybe what, 175, 200?
200,000.
200,000 to put into a street. Usually we have that towards the end of our budget. And what I propose was-
What we do is we wait until the first quarter of tax receipts are received, which gives us an indication of where we're going to stand. And then we just kind of come to you and say, this is how much money we have, we think we should spend. And we decide. And that's how we do it.
That's how we do it. But I want to propose, because doing that, I mean, we make, we make, we're making some strides, but you know, we've got a lot of streets and a lot of disrepair. We need to do a little bit, we need to do some extra, you know? And I proposed 4 million, that was a lot, so I cut her back to bare 2 million, you know? And you got the sheet, the backside of the sheet, what it's going to cost the taxpayers. I know nobody wants to talk about a tax increase, but if we're going to get serious about doing some of this stuff, somebody's got to pay for it. The federal government's not going to help us fix our streets. We're going to have to do it. You know, and we're going to have to work together. And my proposal is to, on the ballot, at the April ballot of 2019, is to let the voters decide on it.
2019?
Yeah, we're going to wait till-
No.
20, yeah, 20, no, April, we're in 2018, so it's going to be, I thought we were going to wait till April.
Yeah, we can't get the April issue.
Yeah, we can't get the April this year, so we're going to, but that's not a bad thing, because what we can do is, we can, I would like to see is, if we're going to allow it to go on the ballot, you guys are going to have to decide that, is I want to get people's input. I think we'll do a lot better with this if we have a committee of citizens that can have some input and try to guide this thing and support it and, you know, let the people decide. But first, it's got to come off, the board's got to decide whether we're going to allow it to happen, you know? And that's what I'm asking. So in two weeks, you guys are going to decide, yea or nay, whether we're going to do it or not. And that's all I'm asking. And I'm, go ahead.
The thing that, Joy Howard, the financial consultant, kind of gave us an indication of what it would cost a person on the bond issue. Dick asked me this question earlier. Right now, if you have $100,000 house, your tax bill a year is $139. If you go with the 2 million issue, based on her information, your annual cost would be 39.96. Because she wanted some sense of how much this would cost relative to the current-
Thank you, you need to-
-tax bill. So you'd be, you'd be adding about a sixth to their tax bill.
What about business property?
Well-
Taxing out of rate?
It's different.
Yeah.
And I didn't calculate it.
Well, I was just saying, so it's going to be proportionate amount of-
Well, if, and again, this is just for the, if a residence's tax bill is $57.29, so this is back when we were doing the, some other work, relative to that, a business would pay $225. So that's the ratio. A year.
A year.
Increase.
Increase.
Which for a business, that's a substantial increase.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, considering the tax, the sales tax-
This was done a couple of years ago. Her more current information has that tax increase on $2 million being 39.96, so the business is going to be proportionally more, 100, you know, 125.
You know, and presenting this to the people-
130 dollars.
Wait, that, wait, wait.
In presenting this to the people and stuff in the past, I mean, have we actually spelled it out, what their cost is going to be, or have we just-
It was done with the fire truck issue.
So we told them exactly what their increase was going to be?
Right. I mean, I personally think, and I, you know, just give advice based on my experience, I think involving the citizens is a necessary step, because it gives whatever plan you come up with, the legitimacy of that citizen input, and hopefully they become your advocates. But even if they don't, you know, you didn't, you unilaterally decide.
I think it's-
I think you come up with specific projects. They were going to, if we get this, we're going to do this, 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 this.
I think it's very important that we educate the citizens on what we're doing.
Right.
And the process we're doing it with and how we're going to do it.
City Hall can't get involved in education. We can't get involved in promoting anything.
I just don't remember seeing it actually on the ballot issue where it's spelled out exactly.
It won't be on the ballot issue, it's just part of the-
Prior to it, you're not going to put it, it's going to be, but if you have citizens involved, you know, I think-
Well, the ballot issue can have the increase on it, it can have the figure on it, it can say, you know, voting for a $2 million road bond issue that will cost the average, you know, this much, you can do that.
Okay.
I'm just wondering what we've done in the past.
Okay, I kind of got lost in what you said here a minute ago. You can't educate the citizens, not City Hall.
We can, we can, municipal resources, tax dollars can be used to educate, but not to promote.
Right. And that's what we want, is that, we talked about education, educating the folks.
I can produce literature that says, here are the facts, but I can't go to a rally and spend tax dollars to support the issue.
You can print out a flyer that says, here's the information, please vote. You can't do a flyer with the information, please vote for it.
A City Hall can.
No, but individuals can do, you guys can do whatever you want to do.
Right.
I just can't allow city resources to be spent to promote the election.
One question I've got, I guess I've got to get out there to wrap my whole, you know, arms around this thing. What is the city's current debt?
We, we've got to put a memory cap on here.
I read it in the audit that it was close to 5 million.
Yeah, it's, we're at a $10 million cap. So we're not, we're not even, we're not approaching our cap, but this will push us that much closer to it.
So how long have we been paying on that debt and when will it be retired?
A portion of the debt will be retired in, what, we looked that up here, 2023?
2023, we'll redo the certificates of participation, but if it's a total debt, you've got water bonds, you've got water stuff out there, sewer stuff out there that's after the question usually.
We just refinanced that.
Right.
And so we're, you know, started the clock over again.
So we'd be basically, if we do the 2 million, we'd be at seven, close to it.
Until, until 2023.
Right.
When that'll come out, when the certificates of participation will come out.
So in those, in that debt, I mean, what type of projects? We did water improvements and some major-
In which, on the 2023-
In the 5 million that we owe now?
Uh, in that one, built the firehouse, bought a firetruck, did Roser Street. Um, I don't know if Westwood was in that, no.
There it was.
Roser was, was in that, there might be another street or two, or partial streets or two in that. But most of it was, Russell was at Far Park.
Was Portis in there?
No.
Park, Portis and Westwood all came after that.
Yeah.
So and you say we have a $10 million cap and that's set by-
The state. And, I mean, you want to be conscious of that, because obviously-
Right.
You don't want to exhaust your borrowing ability, because you never know.
Right.
Well, it reflects your credit rating, a lot of it.
I mean, has that $5 million number been typical for the city for years?
Yeah, for a long, I've been here.
It has been?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, historically, I don't know. It's not, it's not out of the ballpark for cities this size. I don't think we're in, we're in good shape, relatively speaking.
Well, I know you had mentioned earlier and stuff, that some of our bonding companies were looking at us as being not enough reserves.
Their only concern is the size of our cash reserves. And the fact that they were spending down our cash reserves to cover operations for two or three years. We're not doing that anymore. That's good. But they like to see us build our cash reserves back up in order to get off their watch list. They haven't reduced our rating, they just put us on the watch list.
And how many years have we had a surplus of like this $175,000 to be able to spend on roads and?
Just about every year.
Well, I mean, it goes back to the road, the bridge and road tax.
Right.
It kind of always varies.
How much money does Transportation Trust fund bring in per year?
200, oh, the Transportation Trust fund?
Yeah.
That's the bridge and road tax.
Transportation Trust fund.
It's around 200,000.
200,000 apparently?
100, it started out at 180, but it was 200 last year.
So Paul, to take your idea, I mean, of doing streets and stuff, and trust me, I'm all for it, um, you know, I mean, are we talking about some major reconstruction? Are we just talking about overlay?
That's what's got to be decided.
That's what's got to be decided. There'll be some overlay, there'll be some, you know, that's, I'm not going to decide that. I'm hoping that with the help of the citizens and the board, we'll, we'll make those decisions.
I would advise you not to undertake road projects that are funded by a 20-year bond issue that isn't a sufficiently adequate improvement to last 20 years. So, you know, overlay, I mean, overlays can work, but mostly you're going to be removing and replacing.
Was your 40 dollar figure, was that on the 19 year or the 15? Probably doesn't vary that whole heckle a lot, does it?
It was on the one, wherever it started, $33 a month to-
It was 19 year?
For, per citizen.
Okay.
So it was on the 19.
Okay.
On the 20 year, it'd be over 40, a little bit.
Yeah, on the 15. So, but you said, the end, the average on 100,000 right now is $139, and we would be increasing it by basically 40 dollars. So it would be like, you said a six, that's like 29%.
Okay, perfect.
But that's only on the city's portion of the tax.
Right.
Right, not the whole.
Not the whole tax bill.
So this is just the city?
Right, yes, the city's.
Sure, right, right.
So does anybody recall like what Roser Street and Portis Street cost? Just trying to, you know, to be able to support something, you got to know about how much you're going to get for $2 million.
I was here for Roser.
Roser was for something, but that was stormwater, sidewalks, curbs and gutters.
Portis was more like 180, which was just removal and replace.
We got that done for her, huh?
Wow, that's like a bargain for that, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'm mixing those projects up.
I was-
I'd say double that.
I thought it was more than that.
Yeah, I think Portis was more than that.
We know where the file is.
What, you only got one block?
You only had one block.
Two blocks, yeah.
That was stormwater and sidewalk.
Did we replace the infrastructure underneath there when they did it?
Some of it.
Do what?
On Portis?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Did we replace what?
The infrastructure under?
We, Portis had a storm drain coming off the hardware store parking lot that just kind of daylighted and shot water out into the street and like a water cannon when it rained heavy. We got that buried and, and the storm, it ties into the creek underground now between the apartment buildings. And that was the major storm. And then we, there's a, another inlet that was put in.
As far as redoing sewers and water lines?
We didn't do water and sewer, they're in good shape.
They were in good shape?
Yeah.
That's another consideration too, because when you open up some of these older ones, what kind of a can of worms are we opening up? I mean, it would be foolhardy to open up an older street and not address, because you know what's going to happen. You're going to get it all real nice and then you're going to have a water problem, you know, main or something.
Happens almost every time we think-
You can count on it. So we have to kind of be prepared to deal with the inevitable there.
Well, I think we can do that. I mean, I think we can say, you know, if we decide to do, I don't know, pick a street.
Right.
Steve, they can evaluate the water and sewer and decide whether it's part of that project, we shouldn't be replacing a water and sewer line while we have it open. It just becomes part of the capital improvement, that we don't have to-
Right.
To fund them separately.
So any water and sewer lines are 100% our obligation also? There's no-
Yeah.
How did St. Jude get done? It wasn't too terribly long ago, but the, was that part of the 5 million?
No, that was, that was incremental. We did so many, so much there we did.
Yeah, but-
That was just, that came out of, out of the Transportation Trust fund, my recollection. Just dead of street a year, yeah.
Yeah, the, the thing that, I guess is, obviously you go out and borrow that much money, you've got to pay interest, you've got to pay interest to somebody. And you've got that chunk of money out there that you can use all at once, but the part that I, that I look at and wonder how much you could get done with that amount of money and the amount of interest that we're going to end up paying on that money. I mean, if you look at those first couple of years, if you're looking at the 19-year plan year, you're spending $66,000 a year the first, the first year, and then 51, and it goes down, obviously, you know, you get down to the end and it's hardly anything. But not that you have that money in hand, but $66,000 worth of overlay on a street, you're paying it in interest, it's a lot of money that you're paying away on interest every year. Of course, you don't have the $2 million to work with, but at the same time, it's, it's a, if you, I guess I go back to, instead of the bond issue, if you could end up selling, which would be a, I understand it'd be a harder sell, because you can't, there's no way you could specifically say that money on that tax increase is going to go towards the street. And then people would just have to trust a board that says, we're going to take this much money every year from this increase and put it towards streets only. Right? Can't do that.
Well, you can, but you're not going to want to. I mean, you can limit your ballot language to offer certain projects, but it's never done, because you don't want to limit yourself to that.
On property tax and general property tax?
General property tax?
You can do it. You can, you can, you can limit your ballot.
Roll back the tax when the projects get done?
Yeah, yeah, you basically have to spend it on whatever project. It's just never done.
I know, but once those projects are done, the money keeps coming in. What do you do then?
Well, it's, it's going to have a sunset.
You have to roll back.
For that, for that project, or its project is done, and, but like I said, it's just not done, because usually you want to have a vote just to have a capital improvement tax increase. And then, yeah, there has to be a certain amount of trust from the community that you're going to do what you said you're going to do.
I guess because of looking at, if you had that income coming in every year, if you had the, what was the debt service, 165 or 136? Say it was on the, say you got $130,000 coming in a year that you could put towards a project. Granted, you couldn't do $2 million with the projects right off the bat, but if you took that 136, you threw it in with the 100 to 200,000 that you have over your budget usually every year to go to streets, you got 200 or 300,000 there. In five years, and the capital improvement thing's paid off, you've got another quarter of a million. At that point, you've got 400 to 600,000 dollars a year that you could spend on streets, and you're not tied, you're not tied up into-
Well, it's the age-old dilemma that I go through with my business and every other business owner. Do I want to borrow money to put in a ditch or buy a new truck? Or do I want to just wait and try to save it and pay as I go and maybe not get something as nice? It's, it's the same dilemma I think all of us go through.
Where does the extra money come from?
Yeah.
You know, it has to come from somewhere. I mean, none of us like to pay interest, especially $685,000 on a, on a $2 million note. You know, almost a third of your total bond issue payments back is in interest and stuff. But, you know, and, you know, the other thing is, is are we going to see a 3.7% interest rate in 19 years? That's a variable.
Well, this is a floating?
Who knows, but probably not.
Right, so this could be 9%.
So are these done on a balloon deal, where they were fluctuating, or it's just-
No, they, once you, well, they usually, on a $10 million issue, they serialize them, but I mean, the, the rates are fixed. And, and you're right, this is the most favorable rate in the realm of-
And I would say-
So we're guaranteed to anticipate, it's not going to get any lower than this.
Yeah, and I would say they're probably going to start going up based on what I see, but that's anybody's guess, yeah.
It's almost, you know, 2.5%, or 3%, it's almost zero anyway.
True.
I guess I don't understand, Dick, where, you know, how are you going to generate this?
Well, no, generate it with just a general tax increase and not go for $2 million and get $100,000 a year extra. Put that towards the streets along with the 100 or 200 that you're, you have anyway for the next, suffer, and do $300,000, $400,000 worth of streets a year for the next five years. And then you've got another quarter of a million that, that you could throw at it, and you could actually get something done every year for a half a million, $600,000. You could, you could, you could chip away at it pretty good. And that's five years away.
So basically, we could get a Roser Street every year?
Yeah.
Portis was 183,000.
Or two Portis Streets, maybe.
And that's really going all, and that's, I mean, if you, if you had streets that you could overlay, you could do a heckle a lot more than that, but that's going all the way down to the dirt and starting over on those roads.
And that was poured concrete.
Yeah.
And it was highway grade thickness.
Right.
So heavily traveled.
Right.
It would have been less than that if it'd been Westwood.
Some of your smaller streets, if you could grind them up and redo them, then probably be less per foot, right?
But you know, the other part of it, then you've got to rely on what you have, some of them lasting how many more years and stuff, and will they, you know, if you're going to spread this out over a period of time or try to do it all at once, you know, is what we have going to last another five or seven or eight years? A lot of variables. We have to do something.
Got to give the people a choice.
Right.
So we need to decide if we want to do a bond issue or not.
Right. Yeah. In two, in two weeks, we're, well, you know, I-
I mean, there's a decision to proceed doesn't mean they can't change their mind when it comes time for the vote. So if you decide as a group tonight, you want me to proceed to prepare documents, I can do that. And between now and then, whether you want to do a GO issue, a general obligation bond issue.
And if we need more time, that's why we're, we're starting early. It's not going to be on the ballot until 2019, so we've got some time, but we don't want to, we don't want to wait and wait and wait and wait. We need to make a decision, you know, and maybe set some deadlines. I just want to set a deadline.
Mark, in some of your other experience with other municipalities, I mean, this can't be just us. What is, what's somebody else doing?
Doing exactly what you're talking about doing, borrowing money from major capital expenditures.
Just a bond issue, not a-
Yeah, generally, for capital improvements. And Martin made a good point, you want, if you're, if you're borrowing the money, you're going to want to do, use it for capital improvements or to last at least the term of the debt. You know, just like, you know, you don't take out a mortgage to, to go on vacation. Now, you want it to be actual physical structures that are going to last at least as long as you're paying on that debt. So, so you're not really going to want to be doing a lot of overlays of $200,000. You're going to want to dig it up and repaint, see something that's going to be a long-term lasting projects generally. But yeah, I mean, it's the same conversations that all the other public parties have. You don't really want to do a, a bond issue to pay interest or raise the taxes and not have interest, but not have a big lump sum. But if you have a lot of immediate needs, then you're going to do the bond issue, because you don't want to do it all at once, because of their immediate needs. If it's something that's not as immediate, then you do a different, different tax increases in that you have the rate to, to increase the, you know, the tax rates. But, you know, the only way to get something, a lot of stuff done in a hurry is doing a lot of issue.
I think if you do it, Paul, you're, you're going to get a better deal from your contractors too. So you bank your buck, it's going to be a little bit better.
But does it offset the 685,000 we're paying in interest?
I don't know. Probably not, but.
Yeah, there is, there's no way, as you, you know, went from the four to the two, four, I don't think you could sell.
No, no.
But, but at two, and if you're talking about replacements, you're talking about four rows, you're talking about one, two, you know, that's about two blocks long, you're talking about eight blocks of new street, which isn't much, which-
Yeah, I don't know if I agree with the point of having to rebuild things, yeah, where it's warranted and stuff, but I mean, I think it could be a combination of all of the above.
Well, I think so too.
Well, you don't want to do a 2.5 inch overlay, that doesn't have a 20-year life. But if you milled it down, which is often, you know, often done, you're not replacing the base, if the base is-
Right, that's what I'm talking about, replacing the base.
You mill it down and you get a four-inch overlay, and since, you know, then you really got something that's going to last.
Right.
And there's probably quite a few streets you could do that. Oh, I think so. I really do, yeah. Yes, Gary?
There's a few streets too, that the issue is the height of the sidewalk. You know, it may be cost effective to replace some piece of the sidewalk as opposed to milling down or tearing out, to be able to just overlay it also.
Yeah.
So where are our worst streets other than Ninth Street?
We had a list of them.
I know, I didn't agree with them.
You didn't agree with them?
Not all of them.
Okay.
You know, I mean, the ratings on some of them, but I think you'd ask eight different people, you'd get eight different answers.
Our worst streets are in-
Most, most of the worst streets are subdivision streets.
Yeah.
And in doing that, it's not going to have a high impact. It's going to be a real piece of the people that live there. But, you know, Audubon, you know, I don't know how many houses on Audubon, 30?
But it means a lot to them.
It means a lot to them. But the base is gone, so you know, you'd have to-
Yeah, it's rough, yeah.
And a lot of us, a lot of streets, a 2-inch overlay will actually preserve what's there a little bit longer too, so I mean-
Yeah, that's the thing, you don't want to finance for 20 years a 2-inch overlay.
Right. That's, I'm just kind of leaning more towards-
Bet you we've got some overlays that's been out for 20 years now.
Yeah, you've got to overlay the overlay.
There's some oiling and chipping that's out there, it's been out there.
Yeah. Been out there for over 20 years.
Yeah.
And we're not talking about any oiling and chipping?
No, no, not.
But that's just a policy, you know, that, what I said isn't a legal issue, it's a policy decision. You could do chip and seam.
Yeah. I think that'd be not a prudent way to spend that amount of money. If you're going to do it, it needs to be something substantial and something that's If you're going to do it, it needs to be something substantial and something that's going to last, otherwise it's more of the same.
Well, last, Lynn Drive really turned out excellent. I mean, that, that amount of money was spent there, and that's, that's going to last.
What did we spend there?
Wasn't a whole lot.
It was, uh, six.
Seventy something.
Yeah, I'm thinking 78, something like that.
But that's a pretty long stretch.
Big stretch.
Yeah.
Well, we'll, uh, it's out there, we'll, uh, where do we go from here, Martin? What do you think?
Well, if you're not prepared to say, go. Decide when you want to decide.
That's right.
Well, as Mayor indicated, we got to tell, well, we got to have it done by January or December. Pam, sort of get it on the next year's April ballot.
Um, it would be the certification in January.
We don't want to wait that long because what we want to do is get citizens' input. We want to, if we're going to do this, we want to do it right. We want people to be involved in it. They're paying for it. Right. You know, you know, we're all citizens, we're all going to pay for it, so we, there should be some input, so. But I don't want to wait till the last minute trying to, that's not the way we're going to do it. If we're going to do that, then let's just continue to do what we've been doing for the last 20 years or whatever. You know, but, you know, anybody heard, we all know we've got problems with roads, you know, and it's an issue, and we've got to start fixing them, and we've got to get serious about it. We've done some work, but got to really, I think we need to do something we need to do, so. And if the folks don't want to do that, hey, that's okay, I'm, I'm good with that. So, yeah. Let's do on it for a couple of weeks and look at it again, give us two weeks. Talk to some people, go out, you're, Bob, you're out there, you're all out there, and talk to some people. Get some, I'm sure you're probably going to get some calls, it's on the air, so, somebody might call you. So those are good, and it's just a good opportunity to hear from, hear from the people, you know, and if they're not for it, I'm going to, we'll do it, so, okay?
There you go.
All right with everybody?
Yeah.
Next?
Next? Go ahead.
Stop right there.
Go ahead. It's the.
Continue to, the discussion of Dick's proposal for solving the storm sewer problem by adjusting the sewer lines on individual houses.
So how many problem homes do we know we have?
Steve?
What's that?
I don't think we can base, if Bob said how many homes have problems with sewer backups, I don't think we can base it on the ones who called City Hall, because not everybody calls. Once, once, should a program like this go into effect, do you have any sense of how many people might respond to it?
No, unfortunately, there's people in the low-line areas that are just, lack of better words, used to it.
Colderating.
Yeah, so they don't, nobody calls and reports. You get tenants that move in twice a week.
Yeah, I'm not going to hold you to a number, are we talking about 10 or 30?
I'd say 50.
50.
So what has the city done that's caused this problem?
It's been a problem.
This, this problem has been ongoing for how long? It's a, I, I've only been in the city 12 years, not, you, you guys know more about that than.
The issue, I don't want to put words in Paul or McGivern's mouth, but we have this capital improvement fund that was initiated from desire for flood mitigation. And the levy was part of that, and other improvements were supposed to be part of that. But the core engineers now is saying, we're not going to do those major structural improvements that we talked about. Maybe we should handle this on an individual basis. And the proposal they've made, we think nobody's going to want. So what Dick's done is said, well, here's another possible way of addressing that issue using some of that money. Is that the fair statement?
Yeah, my only question is, is, is this issue have anything to do with the, the levy, the core engineers or any, has this been an ongoing issue in St. Genevieve for a long time? And, and when you live in a low-line area, just talk to people over there on Washington Street. That, that's something that happened, well, it's a low-line area, it's, and they have to deal with it, you know, so.
Well, that's why I asked the question and said, you know, what has the city done that's basically caused this issue? I mean, is our sewer lines bad, or are they not big enough, or we don't have the capacity?
Sewer lines are old, and they leak. We didn't do anything. Old sewer lines leak. We have, we are, every year, making efforts to reduce inflow and infiltration. We will never stop it. We may make it, based on what we're doing with manholes and outfalls and inlets, we, we may reduce it. But without replacing the sewer lines, they're going, they're going to leak.
So this is basically something we're going to have to have an engineer design.
To fix it right.
Right, to fix it right, so.
Well, to attempt to fix it right. The right fix is to fix the problem that's in the street. You know, that's the right fix, but we're going to try to, and that's the gray area in all this, and there's a gray area. Because I've talked to Mark about this, taking this money and spending it on personal property. You open up a big can of worms there. I'm sorry, but there's, and it's a gray area that you're opening up for lawsuits, you're opening up for everything else, you're opening the door. And I, I feel bad about it, and it's, but that's the decision that's got to be made, and it's a, it's a tough one, you know, so.
If you're, well, two things, one, one, what Mark said about whether the core's original proposal or, or plan would have addressed this, it, it should have, I would have thought, to, to address these issues. Second, though, I, I guess just as a, as a citizen, you know, you expect things, if you're a citizen, you're a taxpayer, you expect in the city, expect police protection, expect fire protection, expect the water to come on whenever you, when it comes on, and you expect when you flush your toilet to go out. Well, I, I would think just as a citizen, you expect that your sewers are going to work. And one thing that we can't guarantee these people, just like we can't, you know, this isn't any different than a pothole, but certainly for these people, that pothole in the street, this issue's a whole lot more important than that pothole in the street. So they're paying taxes, they're paying water bills, and they're paying sewer bills every month. And to me, we're not, we're not providing the service that they deserve. I guess that's what, bottom line, that's what it kind of gets to.
But you know, I'm, I'm sorry.
We've got no, in the immediate future, we've got no way of fixing it. I, I, I mean, honestly, I mean, when you write down to it, this would cost millions of dollars to fix it the right way. In the immediate future, we've got no way of, no way of fixing these people's problems. It's going to be there, whether it's been there forever. These people have been paying taxes and been paying their water bill, we still charge them as much on their sewer bill every month as everybody else that, that their sewer runs fine all the time. We're not providing, to me, we're not providing a service that, that we should be.
Steve, is this something that's happening all the time, or is this something that just happens when we get these 10 inches of rain?
Typically, just the, the large rainy bits. And I will say, in past years, before work was being done, the most water we sent through our wastewater plant was 5.5 million gallons in one day. Typically, we do about 300,000. We've reduced that to under, I haven't, even in the 15-inch rain that we had last year, we didn't send more than 300, 3 million through the plant. We reduced it greatly, but.
You know, I think I, I, you know, and I get that, you know, but I'm also asking, you know, I pay taxes, you pay taxes, I'm going to pay, my taxes are going to go to fix somebody else's problem. You know, if I have a problem on Academy up there, you know, that, that's another issue with other people in the city that are paying. Do they want to bear the burden of somebody's problem? And it's a, it's just, it's, I just don't want to open ourselves up for down the road for lawsuits or anything else.
That's why it made a difference to me, if we've got somebody that this is a reoccurring problem once a month, or, you know, every other month or something like that, we need to address it. But I mean, if it's just in a, an act of God situation and stuff where we ended up with a ton of rain, I don't know that we can protect everybody. Martin, I'm going to, you know, does other cities see this?
Um, well.
And how do they address it?
Well, the, the, well, yeah, I mean, my other cities have flooding issues or backup issues, that type of thing. And generally, they take the position that if it's a problem caused by the city, the city's going to fix it. And if, if they're going to spend money on a project, generally, they don't want to mess with the laterals. You don't want to mess with the laterals because they're on private property. It's the homeowner's responsibility to do with the laterals. That's the big can of worms. You, you don't want to get in the business of fixing somebody's lateral problem, because we don't have any control over it. We have to get a permission to even go in there, to work on their laterals, it's their, their responsibility. So generally, I want to caution my clients, and that's what I first brought up at the end of that meeting, and I mentioned the mayor. So you know exactly what the, I still don't, I really have a firm grasp on exactly what, what, what the problems are. But you have to make sure that if you're using public funds, and I sent that in an email to you.
Yeah, I got the.
That was shared with everybody, but it, your public funds will be used to address a public problem. Now, fixing laterals can be part of that project. You know, issues with the backups into private homes, if it's part of an overall sewer project or flood maintenance project, and not just to benefit these five people, to help them out with whatever problems they're having. So if it's part of your flood management program or sewer construction program, then that's fine, but you're, you're, it's hard for me exactly to know exactly what's going on here, but it's, it seems like it's in that gray area. And you could say, where basically the, I wouldn't, you probably have a legal objection if you went forward with something to try to mitigate these types of issues, as long as it's part of an overall project to reduce or more effectively manage your sewer system. But I'm not certainly going to advise that you're going to do it, if that makes sense. I, I think I could defend it either way, whatever decision you make. But if it's just to benefit a few people that are, that are experiencing problems due to an act of God, think long and hard about it. Because, because once you set the precedent, you're going to fix somebody's issues if they're lateral issues, then you're going to have other people saying, well, why aren't you fixing mine? When the, when the roots came in and clogged my, my lateral, now, you know, how can I pay all this money out of boredom and all that stuff?
Randy?
I'd like to ask a question and direct it towards Steve. If you attempt to do something like this, can you, is it conceivable that it creates a scenario where, okay, let's do some fancy stopgap here, and then it pushes the problem over here?
Yeah, that could very, very much happen.
That's a question.
I don't, I don't, you know, disclaimer, I don't have a degree in hydraulics or anything else, but I do understand the principles behind it. And it's like anything, the weakest link, you know, you plug a leak here and then you push the water down here. Kind of like you go through with the river.
Right.
Right? You know, you dam something up, and it can cause a problem over here.
Yeah, if there's nowhere for the, for the waters to escape between the next connection, it's going to get pumped out of its frame.
And that, I think that's what concerns me about this, you know.
And that conversation.
And I don't know, it might work just fine, but I don't know. You know, and that would be the rabbit hole that would scare me about this, is that we start.
But in this plan, and it's good, but you're, you're looking at this, you're in somebody's basement, doing plumbing work. I mean, that's digging up yards, it's, it's a pretty big project, you know, so.
Yeah, well, my idea was not, if you read it, it was certainly not, we would end up doing any of that. We would, we would just allow a certain amount of money, whatever that was, so, so that somebody can get that done. I wasn't thinking that Alliance or the city would, would take on any of that responsibility to get that done. It was just knowing that we're not going to be able to, and I guess, Mark, going back to what you said, I think you, in my opinion, you could say it was part of the sewer plan issue because we can't fix, we can't fix the main. It's just not practical to do it. So in that case, can we fix, can we eliminate the problem by allowing these homeowners to take some kind of action to fix their problem? Because we can't afford to do what really needs to be done.
Well, Dick, how would you conceivably do that? Would you just allot them a certain amount of money to get, is that what you?
Yeah, just you'd pick a number.
Yeah, okay, so what would it be? So do we give them just a payoff? And say, here's $4,000, and, and it's sort of like a payoff, if you want to do something, no, or yes? Or is it, they have to do the project before we invest? And then the other question I got is, if they did road your street, John Oles problem out there. That's got nothing to do, I mean, it's, it's up in an area where, how do you justify doing anything? And I talked to him about that after the meeting, I asked him, I says, I don't know how we can justify working on, and, because that was a new street, and I, was there new, there was no sewers put in up there?
Storm sewers.
There were storm sewers, but I just don't.
And it created, he says that created his problem, so.
I don't know, I.
A question for Steve. You talked about a couple of numbers about as far as the amount of water flow that you put through the plant. A normal day, 300,000 gallons. And then somehow or another, we jumped up to how many million?
About 3 million is most we've seen this year.
And where did the water come from?
Rain.
Well, I know, but how do you get it into the system?
They infiltrate through the cracks in the pipe, the joints, water runoff from.
There's people still running gutters in the sewer system.
I thought we addressed all of that.
When we have, when we, we smoke test it, if we haven't done the whole city. But you know, once the ground's saturated, you've got understanding pressure on the lines, so you're forcing water into a line that isn't leaking, because there's no pressure on the line that's running through it normally, it's just surrounded by water, and you've got a head.
Yes, Bob?
Steve, uh, do you guys, does Alliance have other municipalities that can provide sewer, thoroughsteep?
Yes.
Is this kind of typical too, or?
Yeah, it's a common problem all over. Like Martin was saying, you'll never get rid of the, you've got infiltration. A brand-new system's going to have some percentage of leaks in the joints or, but an old system's going to have tree roots going through, you know, there may be, I don't know if you've got clay at all here, but if you do, you can pre-regard all your clay lines, every joint, scout water coming in anytime it rains at all.
For what it's, for what it's worth, other places I've lived, St. Louis, they have these problems.
Yeah, everywhere.
MSD is, there's sections of St. Louis.
I see that, I've seen that all the time.
Big time, yeah.
For what it's worth, some stuff we've seen in the past is, you were talking about if you fix, let's just say a dozen homes on one road with this model you've got here, you know, what if, what if fixing their problem, as you were to earlier, just means the next dozen homes?
That's what I asked, that question.
And that's, that's my, that's my main concern.
Waste that all the way down the road, you know?
It's a tough issue.
It is. I mean, I feel for anybody that's, I've lived through, it's horrible.
Had a house that, yeah, and stuff, and it wasn't fun.
It's, it's not fun.
Yeah, I was talking to you this, this Saturday, I'm with Doral and Lynn. They know, they plug up their house, they know wherever they're at, right on the corner of Washington. But what we're doing though is hopefully, is doing a better job of keeping our creeks clean where this runoff water can go and get out of here. You know, our, our streets, if we get people to make, make sure that the leaves aren't going out in the street and waiting for the city to pick them up, we've got to get them off the street so they don't clog what sewers, storm sewers we have. We've got to do a better job all around, housekeeping.
And I would think, because you've already made strides over the years, while it's not an immediate fix, as things get more and more efficient, eventually, I would hope this would make it combined with cleaning the creeks and.
Yeah, cleaning things up and getting.
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could, you probably never get rid of it, but make it better.
I hope we could.
Yeah.
Well, I just, you know, I, I, I think, I guess, in my opinion, as a city, we owe these people sewer service, and, and to me, I don't know that we're providing it.
See, and that, and in my opinion on this is, and I know I'm all about addressing the issue and fixing it, but it's a, it's an age-old issue that, that it's, it's, it's coming to us, but it should have been addressed 30 years ago. It should have been addressed, there again, kicking a can down the road, and what we're going to do with this is a, is a hope, we're going to, we're going to throw some money at an issue that might work, it might not work, instead of, and I know we don't have the money to fix the problem, but sooner or later, somebody in the city of St. Genevieve, maybe it's tomorrow or 25 years from now, has got to dig up the street and fix the sewer, or do something, you know, so. There again, who's going to pay for that? Well, I guess, who's going to pay for it? The people that live in the city.
Right.
They're going to have to pay for it.
I mean, I just think if we have a reoccurring problem, it needs to be addressed, but if we're based these on a 15-inch rain or 10-inch rain or whatever, I mean, I don't know that we could ever fix every.
Yeah, those, those are extraordinary.
Yeah, those are extraordinary circumstances.
Right.
You can't design anything that's going to take a 15-inch rain.
No.
It's impossible.
I don't. I think these people, I think these people is having this, this issue more often than what.
That's what I would be interested in seeing is who's having it and how many times they're having it.
Well, we have a group of people here. We had, we know John Oles having a problem out on Roger Street. We had three people here that live, I take it right up here. They did, you did some work in their yards? Was there, did you, we were, that test that you did, we had those folks here. What did, what was your, what did you find there?
Till this day, if you drive down Market Street, you'll notice green flags in some of the residences' yards. That's where there's defects in their lateral lines. We didn't find any defects on the city mains, but only on the lateral.
Okay, so, and that's their problem. So there again, here we go. How can you take...
How are you going to know going in that it's not a lateral problem?
You don't.
Well, you know, with this backup, this backup is not...
Well, it bubbles out of the sewer issue.
Right. Yeah. Your basement has three feet of water, it's probably not your lateral.
Right. Well, it could be. The lateral clogs up and stuff like that, everything you dump down the line's going to come back up in your basement.
Could be.
Right.
But I doubt it.
Right. Maybe not three feet.
There again, how long have we been talking about this issue? You guys have been here longer than I have. I only started, I've heard about it and since I've started and I'm sure years prior, we've been dealing with this, Dick. You've been mayor for a lot of years and you've been struggling with this, so...
Well, it, and, and, you know, all along, thinking that at least for 90% probably of the issues of where they're at, you kind of counted on with the whole plan with the core and whatever that was going to be, that that was going to alleviate a whole lot of these issues and, and obviously now it's not. And I don't know, and I even mentioned to Martin, there'd probably be a snowball, they would have to do, if they went through with their plan, the way they've got it designed, they would have to basically do the same thing if, in their waterproofing. Now, would they allow a partial part of it?
Yeah.
And give us credit for it? I doubt it, but they're probably, they're probably all or nothing.
They weren't addressing stormwater backup in, to make in basements.
No, they were going to fill your basement up full of sand and chat.
Chat, there's brilliant.
Their original work was not because stormwater was backing up through the sewer lines in people's basement. They're talking about protecting the structures from floodwater.
Yeah.
You know, as you say, in the process of building half, you're going to, with this proposal, you're going to solve the other problem because you're going to take everything out of the basement.
Yeah, and their proposal now, and now would they, if you went to them and say, well, would you allow, would you allow this part of it without doing paving the basement?
This is not their issue.
No. No, but, but again, they would have to basically do this if they were going to go through with what they were going to do.
Good luck getting an answer out of them.
We will, we will.
Yeah. Well, yeah. There again, we've got two weeks to kick it around, guys. Sooner or later, we're going to have to make a decision to go with it or not to go with it, you know? And it's not a popular one, but it's a decision that's got to be made. And the next issue is, we had some citizens here about Jefferson Street Park, you know, and I've been monitoring Jefferson Street ever since we had that meeting. I don't think, the other day I come up, come up by the, the horse and could barely get through there on a one-way street because there was a truck parked here. We have a problem with narrow streets in St. Genevieve. I think Jefferson Street down there, we made some, we had a problem down there with a family that was parking a trailer on the street and big trucks and a lot of cars. We, the trailer's been removed. The street is no more narrow than any of our other streets. We, we got to stay it, you know, and Eric said something about giving people two cars to park on the street. Well, you know what? If you've got two or three teenagers, that's not going to work. So I think I, my vote is to just, and if, and if people are, there's a, Washington Street is a big white street and it's not very far away, come around that way. So, you know, I don't know as if we do anything down there, but not let it get junked up with cars down there that, that have no tags on them or trailers or equipment down there that...
Well, that's a huge thing, getting my clique down. That's a huge positive.
Right. It is, and it's, it's better down there. So we had a lot of, and I'm not, and that's in your...
I agree. I don't think you do anything. I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's a good, there's not an answer because there's no off-street parking for so many of those people. I don't think you can do anything.
Yeah, but if you look at half of the driveways that are down there, they're full of junk.
Gary?
What we're doing now is already addressing the problem.
With the two times we didn't go up to Brad Sullivan, there was no problem getting bigger with a big truck anymore.
Buck said when they had to pick up, they don't now, they doesn't remember ever having a problem getting a school bus.
There was, there was a time or two, but not base, not, not...
You know, and you're going to have to be, you know, if living with the, you just got to be patient. I got to wait here until somebody comes through, you know? Or don't even go down that street. Go down to Washington where you don't have any problem.
There are a lot of people who would say the street with St. Genevieve is part of its charm, not part of its problem.
That's right.
You told me you were about, you got the same part down to Main Street in front of the inn where they put the sidewalk out for them.
Yeah.
If somebody's parked on one side, you got to wait.
Yeah, it's, it's very, it's kind of...
What was the idea of the bump out?
That was for basically so they could have a sidewalk in front of there.
No trees. You're talking about the Great River Road project.
Just anyone?
Yeah, they had that for the trees and the fences and what have you.
No.
Yeah. We're talking about Market and Merchant.
I'm talking about in front of the inn.
Yeah, I know, but we're talking about...
I don't think there was a good answer with trying, otherwise you had to move his whole wall and fence and all that, so...
But you were talking about the, on the Market and Merchant, Main, where you got all those little islands that are popping out into the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And while they...
Yeah, while they did them.
Don't constrict it, they do take away parking places.
Well, yeah.
It was part of the charm of this.
It is such a charm. Yeah. Well, we're going to be starting a meeting here in a few minutes, so we'll talk about the, I guess what we'll do, I don't see where we're going to be that long in our meeting. We can finish that last one right after the meeting and still be down here plenty of time. Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you all for, that was a good conversation. It was really good. I really enjoyed it, you know, and it's some tough issues, but we're going to get through it a little beside and maybe make some, make some headway.
Let's lead you to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Griminter.
Here.
Alderman Booney. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
Here for a change.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. That's approved the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Pagan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. We have a personal appearance by Mr. Jeff Stroder, is it?
Yes, sir.
You're up.
Yeah. That was quick. Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Jeff, how you pronounce your last name?
Stroder. Pronounced Stroder.
I got it.
You said Stroder.
I said Stroder.
You're up, sir.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here with you all tonight. I've got fairly good news, or at least I think so, so hopefully that'll be a good thing for you all tonight. You all have heard me talk about the reports before. I think you'll find that the results that we have were very similar to what we've had in the past years. A couple of things that I'm supposed to be sure and tell you about, so I'll try to make it quick, not tie you up any longer than necessary. For those of you who've heard me talk before, we have two reports that we issue on your financial statements. The first is a report specifically on those financial statements. It starts out by explaining that the city is responsible for the financial statements as they're presented. My job is to give an opinion on whether or not they're fairly stated. And then it explains the different criteria that I had to follow while I was conducting my audit. The next part of the report explains that it is my opinion that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with the modified cash basis of accounting. Now, that's the technical language that's in there. That is what makes it an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. So that's the opinion that you want on your financial statements. The report goes on to explain that there is some information that's extra, that's included in this packet. Some of it we have not applied procedures to that we don't issue an opinion on. However, we have read through that information, and if we'd seen anything that looked out of place, we would've talked with the city before it became a final part. And then it also explains that there is some other information that's in here that is covered under our opinion. That's what the report, that's a summary of the report. It also explains that whenever I do an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, I have to understand the city's internal controls that are in place on how do we accumulate the information to be able to prepare financial statements. I don't actually give an opinion on those internal controls, but I have to understand how they work. And if I find anything that I would consider to be a deficiency, then this is where I would report that. And I've got one little thing this year that I'm gonna have to come back to when we get there, but I do have one little thing that we had to mention this year in the report. The second part of that report has to do with compliance. We look at the city's compliance with various laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements that are financial in nature. And if we would note any non-compliance with any of those things that we're testing, we would report it here. And our report does explain that we found no instances of non-compliance that are required to be reported. So, the next part of the report are the actual financial statements themselves. I normally don't spend a lot of time repeating your financial information back to you because I know you go through the reports every month and you're aware of that information. And this is also as of September 30th, so I won't take up any more of your meaning than I have to with just going back over those same information. The, at the back of the report is where the findings are. That's the part that usually everybody's interested in. We had one instance that we had to note. We made, as a result of our tests, we recommended two adjustments that were fairly significant in size. We noted that there was some revenue in the federal levy project fund that had been recorded in an internal balance type of account, which meant that it never got into the income statement as revenue. Your revenues in the reports that you had been reviewing were short, thirty-seven. It was there, it was accounted for, it was just in the wrong place. The, and likewise, in the transportation trust fund, there was a line of credit with the bank, and that's a short-term loan. And the rules on how you account for short-term loans in a government are a little bit different than normal. And your accounting had been done the exact same way that long-term debt is accounted for, which wasn't exactly right. So it meant that your revenues and expenses were understated by about eighty-six thousand dollars. Again, the transactions were recorded, just not in the correct spots. So that's one thing I wanted to stress. It wasn't that anything was hidden. It appeared to be an error. Like I said, it was accounted for exactly the same way long-term debt would be accounted for, only the rules were just a little bit different for short-term. So, whenever we make a recommendation for an adjustment to the financial statements, if it's a material amount, I really don't have much choice. It's automatically considered to be a material weakness, so that's why I had to report that to you all this evening. So, but to give you a little context, I wanted to pass along that during the year that we audited, transactions that were processed totaled about five point four million dollars. So, and we had two transactions that we had to mention. So, I'm hoping that gives you a little idea of just how significant the problems were. So, it was some unusual things that came up during this last year, not the kind of transactions that are very common for you all.
Was this a new line of credit?
I think, if I remember, it had started...
You mean the leasing police cars? That's what it is, right?
No, it was the street, for the street light.
For the street light?
That line of credit.
For the LED thing? Is that what it was?
With the industrial realty corporation?
Right. They took out that short-term loan from them.
And I think it was fairly short-term, but it overlapped fiscal years. I think it started at the end of 2016 and was paid off in 2017.
Well, that was unique of them.
It was very unique. That's what I said. I think, as long as I've been doing your audit, I think this is the first time I've seen a short-term note like that. And like I said, the accounting for it is different than the normal long-term debt transactions that we handle all the time. And we account for it the exact same way. So, that really kinda summarizes the quick version of what you have there in your financial statements. You know, yes, sir?
Now, with that in mind, what you just brought to us here, it looks like we're gonna be getting with the orderings.
Well, it raised some concerns that rules change. And my concern was that a rule change occurs and we don't hear about it. And so Sue continues to do things as she's always done it, and perhaps a change should've been made in order to accommodate the new rule. So that's why that's in there.
And it makes perfect sense, you know, and I think it's a really good idea, and we're happy to do that, to visit with you because, like we talked about, this is a transaction that needed to be recorded that we didn't see coming either because you hadn't ever done it before in years past. So, you know, I hate to be the kind auditor that comes in after the fact and slaps your hand for something when it could've easily been done right. So, you know, if we're in touch throughout the year and find out if you've got something different or unusual coming up, we can give some advice.
I will say, and just credit to them, they are like at your service. When you call them with a question, you get an answer. So, not, I believe it's two burdens upon them, and certainly it's a service to the city.
Well, we try to be that way for all of our clients. You've been a client of ours for a long time, and we do appreciate that. And that's how we like to try to show our appreciation, is to make ourselves available whenever you need something, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
But, as usual, I always like to pitch in just a little bit when it is the case. Some of my clients, I keep my mouth shut and I just exit at this point. But on your audit, everyone that we work with treats us very professionally, very courteous, very helpful. Everybody jumps to get stuff for us when we're asking for documentation, or is quick to try to help us understand what transactions have taken place. We really appreciate that. You know, like I said, that's not the case everywhere. I think it's a good indication, though, of the city's ability to be accountable for what they've done. So, and that makes our job go smoothly, so. Like I said, just wanted to pass that along in case you all aren't able to be here during the work day as much as we are, and just share what our experience is.
And that takes you how many days?
What are my crew here? About four days, four days. That went fairly quickly. We had three auditors for part of the time, I think, and two auditors finished it up. I think that's right, yeah.
So that makes it pretty intense work day, doesn't it?
Well, it can't be easy for them because I can only imagine having auditors going through everything you've done. I get a little, I've been on the other side of the desks for so many years, I guess I just kinda take it for granted, but, you know...
We don't let them come the second or fourth weeks because this room is full of crap.
And you know when auditors come in, they're not coming to tell you anything nice. They're just coming to criticize, so.
Well, you know, I have a long story about that that I'll save for another time. Good story.
Well, I don't know if it dovetails with it, but I've been told that an auditor is not what I always thought an auditor was. A gentleman told me one time that the job of an auditor is to come in after the battle has been fought and stab the dead. It's not that far off. I think we've got, we've got all the paperwork just wrapped up. The submissions are all where they need to go. So I believe everything is taken care of for another year, so.
Fantastic. Good. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
You're up, Marty.
So the long-awaited meeting with the UP and ODOT on Tenth Street occurred. Alderman Donovan was there. John Stupi was there. Gary was there. I was there. Paul Arnold from the Road District was there. Two people from UP were there, and two people from ODOT were there. This whole problem, as you know, occurred because they took out a crossing that was being used by commercial vehicles, forcing them onto Tenth Street to use, try to use, the Tenth Street railroad crossing, which doesn't work well for longer, heavier vehicles. And Bob, you can jump in anytime you want to. My impression of the meeting was, they said, "Yeah, this does not meet the test of desirability based on state standards, but it does conform with our minimum standards, so we can't can't just jump in here tomorrow and replace it because there's some kind of imminent threat." But we're gonna put it on the list. Just understand that this being not desirable doesn't rank very high on their list of priorities, and they're probably not going to do anything.
It was basically a safety inspection.
It was a safety inspection?
Right.
It didn't solve this problem?
None.
So.
Sure, so we can move on.
Okay. Went to Simo Regional Planning, first meeting of the new director. Yes, sir?
You reported the Four Street Crossing was never completed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What did they say about that?
You recall they came out here and they lifted the crossing. They found a defective rubber seal that was under the concrete barrier. They put the concrete back in, said, "We'll be back," and they never came back.
Right.
They said, "Here's the number to call and make an official report." And there's a new guy, and he probably doesn't know anything about this, but make the call, get on the list of complaints in the official reporting number that he gave me to call, and identify the crossing number. And I did all that, and that was last week, so I haven't really heard anything.
Did you go down and look to see what they were doing further on down the tracks with their slip?
Yes. You may or may not be aware that there was a bank failure on South Gavery after you turned in. And they hired a contractor to come in, and he put this retaining structure up. It was, you know, when I was in the construction business, I wouldn't have paid for that, but anyway, it didn't, apparently it didn't work well either. So they came back and they removed all, excavated out the material on the bank, and then replaced it with riprap and dirt. It looks better. I think it's probably adequate structurally. I think they need to come back and cede and straw the slopes, or they're not gonna be there after spring, but that's, you know, they can't do that now, so.
They did a good job.
So did they lock that little covert box there?
No.
No, it's open.
Is it open?
Yeah.
So, I called the Corps of Engineers, said, "You know, I haven't heard from you guys. What's going on?" Dennis Gilmore is no longer assigned to this project. They referred me to Michelle Neat, who some people will remember. She spoke to me. She said, "But, in the future, you gotta speak to this other person who's been assigned as the project manager on this project." I said, "Can't you, could you just tell me like anything?" And she said, "Well, the final report should be ready for our review in the middle of February. Then we will comment on it and recommend changes to it, and they will either make them or not make them, and then they will send it on for final approval sometime in March."
The final, final report?
Yeah, the final, final report. You know, I'm holding my breath, but that's what she said. We got a report from DNR on their inspection of the drinking water system. Steve and his group done an excellent job. And their only recommendation is that we have more storage capacity when feasible, but the operations were superior, as always.
Explain that, more storage capacity. Where at?
Anywhere. I mean, the... You're supposed to have, according to DNR standard, a certain number of hours of storage should you lose power.
Oh, okay.
And while we have kind of adequate, it's marginally adequate, and they would like, they'd like you to have forty-eight hours, and we don't. But we've got twenty-four, twenty-six, or something.
We're somewhere around thirty hours of storage. We can run the top of the water plant, and if everybody minimizes these.
That's just a general recommendation.
So how would you increase it? If you could, what would you do? Is that a water tower?
So...
Right.
Paul Arnold from the Special Road District came in to visit me, and he had met with the owners of the property and engineer up at Chadwell Lane. And we're continuing to try and get something we can send into the state without having a full design done on the improvements. And they have asked about the prospect of kind of whether that owner on the south of the northeast corner might be willing to sell, and we could reroute Chadwell away from the steep slope. And if he'll sell, they would be interested in adjacent property owners and buying it, and maybe just kind of come up with a rerouting of the street rather than trying to grade and work with that, the problem we have on the elevation changes. So he was gonna work on pursuing that option, and that would be a good one.
And I'm going on the record, Martin said that's gonna get done this summer.
One way or the other.
That's what you said.
I did say that. The mayor and some volunteers participated in the volunteer cleanup work, and they didn't ask for any recognition. But, I'm giving it to them because they took that old creek bed with Washington behind the levee there, and just cleaned it slick. And he says there's still some more to do.
Yeah, there's a little bit more to do up there towards the corner by the dog park.
But they really did, did, I think, a significant effort in improving that drainage channel, which hopefully will mitigate some of the flooding problems we have on Washington in that low area when the time comes because it'll handle more water and get it out faster. So anyway, I think they deserve great recognition for their volunteer efforts.
Boy, your timing was good. If you get it done now, hopefully when the rains come... Yeah, we're gonna finish it up hopefully Saturday, and I hope to do some more in some of these other creeks, just get some of the dead wood that's in there out of it, you know?
Is that channel kinda silted in too, or...?
Yeah, that channel is silted in a lot. Because I was talking to the old timers around there, where there's a sewer pipe that goes through that, and they were telling me when they were kids, they used to be afraid to, when they walked on it, to fall down, but now there's only this much between that bottom of that sewer pipe, which is, you know, so.
Is that all on private property, or...?
Yeah.
That's why it's gotta be a volunteer effort instead of a city effort.
Well, but I mean to clean some of the silt out of there, because that would definitely...
Well, you gotta watch that because you could cause some ponding issues, and then we had problems with mosquitoes. We don't have a problem with mosquitoes, but we could if we did something like that. So I think leaving it like it is, the water's gonna flow naturally right down to the pipe that's down there. It's good elevation. It's just, it'll hold more water too because it's, there's a lot less debris in it, so. On the Special Road District, that would be still using, with them, using money that is already in our budget, right?
They have not committed to additional funding, but on the other hand, they're actively participating, and it's a possibility.
They haven't said anything about us being in the budget for this year.
They have not. So the last item ties back to the Simo Regional Planning Commission meeting. We talked about some grants that are coming up at that meeting. Community development block grants are, there's a funding round, and they're always mentioned, and it's how a lot of communities get things done, including streets. But it's means tested, so you have to benefit low and moderate income folks when you use these grants. And frankly, St. Genevieve's income is too high. We don't qualify. The county's got like forty thousand, forty thousand dollar average annual income, family income. And that's nowhere near low and moderate income level standards, which were like in the mid-twenty thousands. So, we're not eligible for that. We're not eligible for the transportation funding, because it's called a tagger grant, because they don't do small projects. So if you have a five million dollar or bigger major transportation project, you can get some federal highway money. We obviously don't qualify for that. But there is some money available for affordable housing improvements. So I forwarded that information to the Housing Authority because there, this is money they can, grants they can get to do renovation of their existing facilities. You don't have to build new ones, and they need work, so I've forwarded that on to them, and hopefully they'll follow up with that. And finally, you've probably been reading about the Volkswagen diesel settlement. The state's gonna get forty-one million dollars from Volkswagen, and it has to decide how to use it in ways that reduce diesel emissions. And actually, our fleet's in pretty good shape, but if an application process comes through, replacing older diesel vehicles is one of the things that they're gonna do. We just, I don't know what the standards are, how old, and what condition, and that kind of thing. But it's possible that there'll be some money that we can apply for to replace our, not necessarily our oldest, but our poorest performing diesel pickup or dump truck, diesel-powered dump truck.
Sit.
Eric, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? It's been a while. I included the last several months' reports. The last report I gave, I guess, was in October. So I've included the staff reports for the months following that, really just kind of as our stats, our calls for service. Since that time, we have hired two new officers. One was replacing one that left, and then one was through the increase that you guys allowed in the eighteen budget year, so we appreciate that. We have promoted Ryan Pollock to detective, and he's doing a great job so far. We'll be sending him to some trainings and stuff to improve even more, but he's definitely been beneficial. We have gotten our K-9 back, which I believe we brought in and introduced. But he is, he's in service now. The vehicle is in service. It's striped and outfitted, and so he's ready to go. And we brought him up to the school a couple of days ago and searched the public school, and he did a really good job up there, and well-mannered, and so.
Did you say it was a search?
Yeah, we did a search of the lockers and vehicles. And like I said, he's... Yeah, few findings, but nothing substantial, so. But like I said, a well-mannered dog, very disciplined, and so I think he's gonna work out very well. I don't really have much else to report. I've got a couple of grants that we've applied for. I believe one of them was on last month's consent agenda. We have another one tonight. It's not a monetary grant. It's more for equipment to replace our mobile data terminals that we got seven years ago. It was through the same agency that provided those initially, through the Missouri Police Chiefs Association. So there's no match on that, and like I said, we're not receiving any money. We just received the equipment. So I'm not really even sure that the grant has been submitted, so I'm kinda asking, asking for forgiveness more than permission, I guess, at this point. But the deadline had passed, and then it kinda came up quickly, but there's no match on that, so hopefully that won't be a problem. And I don't think I have anything else. Does anybody have any questions?
Now, having the dog at school, is that something you guys just do randomly, or do you get called?
We can. We've got a good relationship with them. We did coordinate this with them. But we have done more of a spot inspection before with their blessing. So, on this one, this one was scheduled, and they knew about it, and like I said, we have a good working relationship with both the schools. So it will certainly benefit everybody, I believe. The dog is a lot more even-tempered than our previous dog, so it's a lot easier to take him around kids, and I think he's gonna work out really well, so.
What all does he train to do?
Heroin, marijuana, methamphetamine, cocaine.
Drugs, not explosives?
Not explosives, but he is trained to track article searches, people, and also bite work for, you know, should the officer be attacked or anything like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve?
Evening, everyone. Last month was a very busy month for the Water and Sewer Department. Cold temperatures.
Explain what happens when you have a long cold sentence with water meters.
Well, short of it, they freeze. Once the freeze level gets so deep, I mean, everything is frozen solid. Shallower meters are gonna freeze first, with the exception of the ones that have the frames and lids that are not sitting on there correctly because of lawn mowers and stuff of that nature.
So what can a homeowner do to protect against their water meter freezing?
Couple steps you can take are, we've seen things in there from phone books surrounding the meter pit, insulating it, packing pellets.
What should you not do?
Don't put a heat lamp on your meter. They are made out of plastic. They will melt.
Boy, I would've put one in there.
A light bulb though, like?
Yes, a light bulb in a closed area will put off enough heat to prevent lines from freezing. Other measures you can take, you know, you can put packing pellets in there, you know, the styrofoam peanuts. We do have some in stock now. They're a foam, a foam disc that'll go on top of your meter and inside the meter pit. Those are, those are pretty uncommon, but they're new to the, to this area. So we do have some of those on hand for some rare instances.
I saw a bale of straw on what?
Yeah, there's a, a lot of times where individuals will get them thawed out. They'll put a bale of straw over it. The improperly installed, not installed meter lids and frames, but the ones that aren't sitting on there correctly let cold air through a gap. So if you can prevent that by proper yard maintenance and, and keeping dirt filled around them, that'll help as well. And if the lid's off, you know, for one reason or another, just call and we'll come put it back on.
Does that help if, like, lines get broke during a real, real cold weather?
Yeah, we had a few lines break. Typically, around here, our lines break when it's on the way to getting cold and on the way out. We actually worked on Christmas Eve and Christmas night on a couple of main breaks. Christmas night was a twelve inch main break that fed the community center in progress property area.
That was not an old line either, was it?
No, that line I believe was put in in '0s, no, ninety-four, so.
Boy, the problem too, was the, the dry fall didn't help you?
No, the extremely dry ground through the summer and fall. You know, once it gets a little bit of moisture, it's gonna start moving.
So you got a real cold spell on a really dry ground, you're gonna have problems?
Yeah.
Part of the possibility.
Yeah. We've been pretty lucky considering some of the surrounding towns. At one point, we had, you know, one, one main break and some of the surrounding towns had multiple at the same time.
I was hearing about it and I was calling Steve. How we doing?
One town, I think they had six main breaks going on at the exact same time.
As far as the issues with the infiltration, inflow and infiltration?
Inflow and infiltration.
Now, you guys fix a bunch of the manholes, right?
Yeah, and we continue to every year.
Yeah, to eliminate that, that problem, correct?
Yes.
Five years ago, we invested in that?
Yeah, it's probably been about five years ago. We've got the strong seal unit. It allows us to go in and seal the interior lining of the manhole. Typically, it's brick that has a lot of inflow and infiltration coming in. We can seal it and we'll go back and check those once a year. And the ones we've sealed, none of them have had any additional problems.
Well, that's one thing that helped. You said at one time you had five million gallons?
Five, five and a half million through the plant and this past year, we didn't go over three.
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons, because of...
Yes, sealing the manholes, yes.
Quite a good thing.
So in between all the freezing meters, we managed to drain the claricon inside the water plant, clean that out and inspect it. We try to do that annually, every December. Just before that, we also did that with the recarb tank. It's a large twenty thousand gallon tank inside the, inside the water plant as well. No deficiencies were reportable on the claricon. And there's two diffusers inside that were, had some fouling. That's what we feed CO2 through. Those have since been replaced. Let's see, we had a couple twelve inch main breaks and frozen water meters. And unfortunately, at the end of the month of December, Kevin went ahead and retired. I did have his replacement hired before he retired, so.
Is he replaceable? Yeah. Where'd he come from?
He lives between, just the other side of Wine Garden, up there on Sea Road.
So is this on job training, or does he have a lot of experience?
No, he's got a C-level state license. He ran division over off sixty-seven there for a while, so.
So he has experience?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Martin's gonna give you the tourism report.
Tourism was up.
I said it was down in the city.
Tourism nationwide is down because of... Tourism statewide is down. Tourism in St. Genevieve is up.
There you go.
There you go.
I like the little card that they have. They do these annually, don't they?
Yeah, it was done quarterly for a while and, but they're doing it annually now. And noted on that, a new event. It's the Scottish festival.
Yeah, I saw that.
And that's, that's kinda neat. I mean, I know we celebrate our French and German heritage, but to have another kind of cultural event, I think is a, is a neat thing. And they're gonna have Scottish games where they're throwing the timbers and whatever.
You gonna wear a kilt? Any Scottish whiskey? That'd be in April.
Sounds good.
All right, any committee reports? Move right along. The consent agenda. Does that time to look over the whole consent agenda?
Making motion to approve.
Second. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Takes us to old business. Bill number forty-two oh six. This is a second reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the organized crime drug enforcement task, task forces program and the St., and the St. Genevieve Police Department in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
No approval. Second.
Have a roll call vote.
Alderman Grimmer, Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rizika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number forty-two oh six now becomes ordinance forty-one thirty-eight.
Thank you. New business, bill number forty-two oh seven. First reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Bill number forty-two oh eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board, channel nine ninety slash nine ninety-one.
Move through. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Bill number forty-two oh nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding nine-one-one dispatching services for the calendar year twenty eighteen. Call in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there any other business?
Move in German. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
That's it.
There's no insulation up there either, or like very, very less?
Think about renovation, you know, you, you need to think about especially if, maybe not in here, but in, over here, if we can do that, drop some ceilings and new lighting, save on our heating. You can offset some of your expenses. It's gonna cost. It's gonna be a big expense to do, but...
Maybe some upgraded duct tape for the carpet?
Well, it's, uh...
Grill tape?
Yeah, grill tape will usually happen.
Grill tape. But you know, as we, there's, there's something, I, you know, we looked at, you know, is it, is it worth? You gotta look at the, I have to ask the questions. Is it worth putting money into this building we have here? Or moving out and buying something else? My vote is to, is to stay.
Yeah, but see, that, that's, I've, I've kinda thought this over numerous times. Is it worth sticking a lot of money into this building?
Well, I think you gotta look at, for me, I look at location. It's handy for everybody. Is it an older building? Yeah, but there's a lot of older buildings that, and it's, I think it's worth the investment. But I think, you know, it's just like with all of us and anything we do, we upgrade, you know, I think it's time. And we need to do it in, in the police department. We, I mean, go take a tour of that place back there. It's...
You've gotta get some more bathrooms in here somewhere.
Well, and the other thing is the security issue up in the front.
Yeah, it needs to be addressed.
Relatively speaking, that's a minor.
Well, I know. I'm just saying that to me is one of the more important...
Well, my thought on, and that was, you know, cause we had talked about taking a big chunk of that money that we have in the capital improvement fund and spending it on streets. That's why I kinda want the bond issue. I'd like to see us be able to take some of that. But we'll have to take some of that money if we're gonna renovate City Hall. Cause I talked to Martin, can we borrow money? He said, no, you can't do that. So that's a capital improvement, this building. So something we need to do, you know, so, cause we don't have to do it today. There again, somebody's gonna have to do it sooner later, so.
So the amount of square footage that we have in here, does that meet our needs as far as the amount of people that are in here and...
Yeah, I think just in terms of total square footage, it's not laid out in the most efficient and comfortable manner. The police could use more square footage. And what Eric was proposing, he only really added the area he's sitting with right now. But he had it configured so that it was more functional for them. I think we got plenty of square footage. But again, it's just a question of layout and...
And I, and I think Pam can add, you know, she's kind of with her job, she's towards the, to the back of the building and needs some privacy. And I know Sue's not here, but I think on the upper end, the girls like that, being able to...
We had Carla's desk where there was a partition blocking it off and she made us take it down.
Yeah, and that's nice because...
I want them to see what's going on and be part of the action.
You know, and as we make that a secure area up there as you enter, there's gonna be some challenges in that to kinda keep that. But we, we gotta be smart about that too in this day and age. We gotta have a, some kinda buffer there, you know?
Definitely.
Absolutely. And I'll tell you right now, it can happen here. I just, I was talking that there was apparently, and I didn't even know about it, but there was, Martin was telling me about some drug dealers were in this town with weapons on their streets. You know, and they were, the police department caught them, you know? Thank goodness. They were here looking for somebody, so.
How are, is there any thoughts to, is, I, I, I agree. I think there ought to be some kind of a counter, some, something up there. Something up there, but I don't think that we, my opinion, to go over the top and put in glass where you gotta speak through a microphone and send your money through a...
Courthouse.
Courthouse. That just seems like doing that kinda thing is over the top. I, I just...
That was a recommendation of the ISO inspector when he was here.
But, I mean, banks don't even, I, I, I don't, I don't know. And then you got, I don't know, I, I just, I still go back to the impersonal and it just seems so impersonal and, and customer unfriendly that you've gotta come into City Hall and talk to somebody through a gla-, or even talk them through a glass or do anything. I, I, certainly there ought to be a barrier, there ought to be a counter, there ought to be something, but I, I don't know. That's just personal opinion.
Wasn't there something in Senate Bill five or whatever that required?
We have to separate providing separate office facilities for the courts from the police department. They can be anywhere else in City Hall, just not in the same space that the police occupy. And the police clerk can't have, the court clerk can't have duties for record keeping with the police department. The court clerk could do other things, but, but can't be keeping police records as well as the court members.
So this has to be blocked off?
So we've gotta find a place to put Lisa.
And the reason behind that?
To avoid the appearance of super priority, can I have an independent judiciary separate from the police department?
First.
Now, the only recommendation for up front was just for whoever is handling money, right? Not necessarily...
The recommendation was to somehow make it impossible for somebody who comes in to re, just reach over and gain access to the money. That doesn't mean we have to put that person in a sealed vault. Just, right now, it's, you know, it's too accessible.
I mean, we're only taking payments at the one counter right now, aren't we?
I like that.
Both sides.
Pam, what, you, you work at City Hall. You're here. What, what are your thoughts on this? You're, this is your facility and your home.
Well, I mean, there's other ones here too. I've been here almost thirty years. I've never, maybe once or twice I felt a little threatened by someone. But other than that, I've never felt threatened. I think security, you never know because there are people that, you know, in today's day and age, you just never know.
Only takes one.
And the, the safety of our employees is important.
Very important.
There's a lot of times though, that there may not be anybody else up front and I'm here in the back. And if you close that off, that might, you know, we'll have to make sure that there is someone up there at all times then.
Or a bell or something like that too. We could add something like that. Some kind of automated device, you know, to tell you...
Once the money comes?
Are you talking about enclosing the back part, like from there on back?
No, no, just...
Forearm.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Instead of just being in the middle.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if anybody else was ever in the old City Hall down at Jefferson Street, but they used to have like a, you had to go through a gate, I think. They had like just a small wall. Do you remember that? And, I mean, you had to go back to somebody's office, which it was wide open down there too. But you had to go through the gate and then go to the desk. Remember that?
So we're, the way we actually handle the money when it comes across the counter, I mean, is, is that secure? Do we have some kind of vault that drops into or...
A cash drawer.
Yeah, that needs to be changed.
That's just pick it up and go to the, where you take it to the safe, I guess.
Well, at, at the end of the day, we lock it back there.
But it's still out there all day.
During the day, it stays there, yeah.
Where's it locked here?
It's kinda, there's a drawer behind the counter.
Probably oughta not discuss it too much.
On the air.
We got a policeman that stands by watching it.
Yeah, yeah.
We wanna give somebody a roadmap here, you know?
We got cameras all over.
That door locked, that door locked?
Well, we just getting back to the...
It's in a locked vault.
I don't know, to me, I, I, I... I wouldn't say worry, but the security as far as physical safety, the employees, to me, is more important than... It's all important.
Well, yeah, that's not the point.
I kind of agree with Pam. I mean...
And I I kind of agree with Pam. I mean, but the world seems so crazy today. I would hate the thought of somebody from outside the community coming in and doing something. And it seems like stupid stuff is happening every day, stuff we don't ever think. Well, we're just looking at, when we do the renovation, that's gotta be part of it. I agree. And I, and I'm, I agree with Dick. You don't wanna. No, you don't wanna lock people out. You know, because that's what the, that's a small town. That's what small towns are all about, you know. And we don't have to get crazy, but we can put up some kind of barrier and deter to give somebody some time to get get out the back door or get.
Cameras, yeah.
I think before we sit here all night and talk, go over, I think we probably need to get an engineer in here and get somebody to figure out what we need at the City Hall. I mean, what what we need back in the police department, figure out what we need, get an engineer and figure out a contractor and figure out what's gonna cost. And then we go from there.
Do we wanna pay a contractor or where are we at on?
Say an engineer, probably an architect.
Architect, excuse me, architect. Well, that's gonna cost money. So are you guys willing to let us go ahead and get an architect or?
Well, I'd bring him in and let him do an analysis and stuff and then let him give us an idea of what they think it would be and what it would be.
$1,500.
Yeah.
Do it.
Do it. $1,500 for what?
Just for that kind of the prudential evaluation, preliminary drawing.
People spending out on house plans now.
Um, one thing I think, timing wise, I don't know if you can talk about a tax increase or a bond issue and renovating City Hall at the same time. I just think you're gonna get, you're gonna get people, how can you guys wanna renovate City Hall, police department, whatever, renovate anything and ask for a tax increase to do streets? I just, the timing just, to me, they just don't sound like they go together.
Yeah, but you're talking apples and oranges. I mean, it's, I mean, the money's, I agree, I agree with you there, but.
It's building maintenance.
Yeah, it's things that you have to do when you you make renovations at your house and we, it's, that's the reality of it all, you know. You can't just, I mean, the timing is never gonna be perfect, you know, so.
I'm just saying, you know, I. Okay. That's just my my opinion. I just don't, I think people will look at what you were doing and then you're going out and asking for basically a tax increase at the same time. I just, I just don't know what the timing is, is the best, but.
You only got something to say?
I think as long as we present it right, you know, and also mention the fact that there's some guidelines we have to follow.
Well, that is the thing. Legally, we need to.
You know, we have to tell them why we're doing this. I mean, to a point, you don't have to get into a lot of detail, but.
Well, I, we just be upfront with people, you know. And you're gonna have, and I, and Dick, I've learned something here in nine months as being mayor. I hate to say this, but you can pretty, the passivity in our town is pretty high. You can do things. People just are not connected. They're not, the bond issue, it's a little bit different. But but things go on and nobody even knows it happens, you know, because for whatever reason and until people, you know, I just, I don't think that's an issue. But that's, in this town, I don't think so. And I'm, I tell that to people all the time. It just amazes me, you know, that, yeah. And I think people are smart enough to know that, you know what, I don't know about all you guys, but I've made improvements to my house and, you know, so this is, this is a valuable piece of property that needs to be up, kept up and decent and functioning. So and people own it. We don't own this building. It's their building. Well, at least you can get the analysis and find out what we're looking at financially and then decide a timetable. Right. So.
What's the value of this building?
Do you know?
Whoever have it?
Value of the building?
Yeah.
Market value or what we have it on the books for?
Market value.
Well, it takes a study. I don't know if there's any comp to support anybody's decision on what it's worth.
Well, I'm saying for resale.
I know what you're saying. I'm not sure. I'd have to work on that one. I could do replacement value.
Yeah.
But that'd be market value required as.
Can't replace this place.
Oh, I think it's the location of this place and accessibility is really good, you know.
Yeah, if you talk about reconfiguring another building and then moving everything.
Yeah.
Millions.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't think so.
No, I think you invest in what you have, you know. What you have works. It just needs.
I think we need to promotion.
So I'll contact the design professional and see what kind of price we got on. If it's within a couple of thousand dollars, we'll proceed. If it's not, I'll come back to you.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, but you need to have some idea of what you're willing to spend here, though, too, for a project.
Well, that's part of it. I mean, Eric's gotta cost out on what he wants to do. I don't know. You know Steve Bacon. You know Steve Bacon. Steve does a lot of public building work.
He's done really good work.
He knows, he knows.
He's worked for me. He's good.
Like I said, the Herald just had something last week that 25 years ago, they, the city paid Bacon to.
Right.
Come up with a plan for this place.
Oh, really?
I'd like to see what they came up with 25 years ago.
Yeah, he probably still got it.
Might as well.
That would've been Steve's.
Well, it's still bacon commercial provide.
Right.
But anyway, Steve was doing work for the county. He's doing work for the museum. He's in town all the time.
Yeah. He's a good guy. He's easy to work with.
He's a nice guy.
Yeah.
Nice guy.
Thunder room. Thunder room. Put my addition, you know, designed my addition. Again, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Still had to have engineering. Is that a nitty?